It's soft.
Long day?
Yeah, lot to do. Oh, there's your concert.
Yep.
They were good. I went and watched them play.
The last one was maybe the Led Zeppelin.
I watched it ten years ago.
All right, I want to say first of all, good evening. At this point, I have, there's nothing to report out from the study session, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to adjourn from the study session. Second, any objections? See none, so move. All right, so at this point, I'd like to open up the Ballpark City Council regular meeting. Today is August 16th, 2017. The time is seven o'clock. At this point, I will have Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco lead us in an invocation, followed by the flag salute. So I'll ask everyone that's able to stand to please do so. Thank you.
Mayor, I would just like to share a prayer that was said at Sara Garcia's, a woman that passed away from St. John's. But let me just read a quick prayer that was said there, a poem. "God saw she was getting tired. God saw she was getting tired, and a cure was not to be. So he put his arms around her and whispered, 'Come with me.' With tearful eyes, we watched her suffer and saw her fade away. Although we loved her dearly, we could not make her stay. A golden heart stopped beating, laying loving hands to rest. God broke our hearts to prove to us he only takes the best." This was read at Sara Garcia's funeral. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. At this point, we'll face the flag, put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you very much. I want to say good evening to everyone. Before we get started, I want to recognize the mayor of the city of West Covina, Mr. Lloyd Johnson. Thank you for being here, mayor from the city of West Covina.
Well, let me clarify. I think he's Mr. Warsha is the mayor, right?
Oh.
Are you Mayor Protan?
The council member, all right. Sounds good. You got my vote the next time around, rotation. All right. And also, a former mayor of the city of West Covina and the upper San Gabriel as well, Mr. Mike Tuohy. Thank you very much. And also Herb Redhalh, the commissioner from the city of West Covina. Thank you. Thank you for being here. All right, did I miss any other electives that are here? Oh, also, I did think, I did see, did I see Al Contreras? Yes, thank you very much, the upper San Gabriel Valley. And also David Muse Plant, Commissioner, city of Baldwin Park. And also, oh, that's right, and also Margarita Vargas, who was also part of the upper, the San Gabriel. Hold on.
Valley County.
Valley County Water District. Thank you very much. Also, as well, Ms. Gina Yala, who is a park and recreational commissioner. Did I miss anyone else? Oh, yeah, that's right. Oh, David Muse, yes, water board, Valley County Water District. Did I call you commissioner? All righty, thank you very much.
Pastor Jackson's here.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay, all righty. But Pastor Jackson's here? Okay, thank you very much. We miss you. Ricardo Pacheco did the invocation. But at this point, I will ask Alejandro Avila if she could conduct the roll call of the city council.
Good evening, everyone. Councilmember Cruzbaca?
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Pacheco?
Here.
Mayor Protan Rubio?
Present.
Mayor Lozano?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to make a motion to excuse, excuse me, our city treasurer, Maria Contreras. That is my motion.
Second.
Okay, any, no objections? Thank you. All right, so at this point, we'll go over to, let everyone know, we're going to also concurrently open the finance committee, the housing committee, and the municipal, municipal finance committee. That's a new committee and part of the city, so all will be open concurrently. At this point, we have the presentation of plaque to Father Jonathan Myers, a former priest at St. John's. The Baptist church, over holding, okay, understand, we're going to be holding it over to the following September. Thank you. All right, the presentation by the Valley County Water District regarding the consumer confidence report and the upcoming Proposition 2018 notice and public here. So at this point, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city councils, and the audience. I think the big audience came out for me, but I guess we got some special guests out there as well, so. So I'll certainly take this opportunity. My name is Jose Martinez. I'm the general manager of Valley County Water District. I've been on staff for about a year now, so things are really going well. So it really is a pleasure to come back to the city council and make this presentation. As mentioned, we have a couple of our directors here, Director Vargas and Director Muse are here. But similar to the city, we are a public agency, so we do have an elected board of directors. One thing I wanted to announce is that the annually, on an annual basis, Valley County Water District and all water providers have to provide a consumer confidence report. The main purpose of this report is to provide water quality information to our customers. But we really like to take it a little bit above and beyond and really highlight a little bit of the history of the water, how water conditions are going, how the drought conditions. So recently, we mailed out about 12,000, over 12,000 of these copies to all Valley County Water District customers. So if they haven't received them already, they should be receiving them shortly. Really proud of this issue. Again, this is a summary back in 2016 of water quality samples that we're taking. So this is a report that we provide to our customers. Within the document, we go into a little bit of historical overview. Our district was founded back in 1925. And one thing to really highlight is here that we serve over 2 billion gallons of water annually to our customers. And 100% of that water supply comes from groundwater sources. We have over 100 miles of pipelines, three treatment facilities, sixteen, or six reservoirs, and 12,470 meter connections. So certainly, we do our best to maintain, manage, upgrade all these facilities, all this pipeline as best we can for our customers to provide the best customer service and to provide the best overall water supply to our customers. One thing to note is that, as we see here, the current levels of the main San Gabriel basin, which is our main groundwater, water supply, is near historical lows. We're only about five feet above the key, the key historical lows for the Key Well. So that is certainly one of the messages that we have in our consumer confidence report. A message of conservation, a need to preserve this resource. So that is certainly something we wanted to highlight in this document. Another thing that we added in the document was that the district is in the process, and we just finished conducting a rate study. With that rate study, we did a overall cost of service analysis. And we really determined that there is a high increase of rising costs for the water supply. The supply of water that we pull out of the ground. And if we go over our allocation, the allocation of groundwater, we have to replenish that water with pricey imported water coming from different sources. We also noted that we have an aging infrastructure, all those miles, 100 miles of pipeline, reservoir, treatment facility. This is something certainly we wanted to highlight, focus on, and come up with a strategic plan of how to start replacing all these, all our different facilities in our service area. We also have aging meters. One of the best ways to, the way we track our water usage through meters. So if these meters are aging, we're not doing appropriate accounting of the amount of water that's going to the customer, and they're not paying their fair share for the amount of water that they're using. Also, we've conducted a master plan several years back that looked at our system, and we determined that there is a need for additional reservoirs and improvements to the overall hydraulic gradient of our system. So those are all issues that we kind of looked at. And with that, we conducted this water rate study. And with that, as mentioned, that we are going to have a Prop 218 notice go out to our customers within the next, probably within the next month, that our customers will receive a Prop 218 notice, notifying them of proposed changes to their rates. So with that, once that notice is received, there will be a 45-day process. And after that, there will actually be a public meeting to discuss this Prop 218 notice. Prior to that public hearing, we're also going to be conducting several public workshops. We still need to schedule the dates for that. But those workshops will be available for the public to attend, and we can discuss the overall proposed rates during those workshops as well. One final thing, as I mentioned, the consumer confidence report, which is available in Spanish. So our customers, if it's needed in Spanish, it's available online on our website. And we also have, we'll have printed out copies at our office, so it will be available for them to come to our office to pick them up. But another thing in our consumer conference report we really stress is water conservation. As mentioned, the Key Historic Well is near historic lows. And conservation is really something that we can do so actually customers can control what their water bill is by the amount of consumption. So if they start using water in a little bit more efficient manner, they'll also reduce some of their overall costs for their water bill. The district, not only do we promote conservation, we have, we have workshops, we have educational classes with the customers, and we have ongoing rebate incentive programs that all our customers are available and can participate in. And one question we always get, what days can we water? And this last slide kind of highlights exactly what days our customers can water, determined by the address, their last number on their address. And our customers can now water three days a week, so that is the permitted amount of days that our customers can water. So we always get that question. With that, I've been told to keep it within five minutes, so I kind of raced through some of those slides, but I wanted to keep within my allotted time, time limit. But if there's any questions of the council, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Cruzbaca.
How are we doing with the consumption of water being that it rained and everybody's under the impression that it's okay for us to go crazy with the water in a sense?
I think that's a great question. And that one slide going back to where we at with the Key Well, that we're only five feet above historical lows, that's a great indication of where we're at. We kind of, we had a great winter with local rains. The snow pack up in the Sierra Nevadas was fantastic. But unfortunately, after five, six years of drought, that was not enough to recover. And that's why we still have those, those three-day limitation of watering days and also still continue to promote water conservation for our customers. So still very valid and very needed for conservation to use water in an efficient manner. You're welcome.
Let me, I want to ask a question. So there's a total of nine wells. That's my understanding, that only four are being used?
We had multiple wells that, over the years, got dwindled down to four. So we have Valley County Water District, and the water that we provide to our customers through four active groundwater wells.
I know that on the tour that you have on the upper bowl unit that you have up there, up north of Nubia. So is water still being pumped out?
Correct.
Where's that, where's that going to?
That is actually a facility, the Baldwin Park, the Lanty Plant, which we call. It's a state-of-the-art water treatment facility. And for that plant, there's three wells, three separate wells, different from the four wells that go into our system that can pump water out of the basin, contaminated water, historically contaminated over the years. It goes through that state-of-the-art facility where we have UV treatment, granular activated carbon, just fixed bed resin. So a lot of advanced treatment facilities to remove those contaminants. So those three wells pull water, it runs it through the Lanty Plant, and water from them goes out to other providers in the local area. But water from that plant does not come to Valley County Water District customers.
Right. So is that water being utilized?
Yes, it is.
Is that being consumed?
Absolutely.
Really?
It meets all state and federal drinking standards with advanced treatment technology that isn't being used there, implied there, or employed there. It's, it's, it meets, like I said, state-of-the-art treatment and meets all state and federal regulations.
Now, I think what's interesting, I know it goes through those silos, and I guess it's, you know, removing whatever chemicals, so particles or whatever. So is that, from my understanding, that can be updated or upgraded so that it continues to look for even more?
I had several meetings today, just constantly talking about potential upgrades of that facility. New treatment technologies, technologies that were state-of-the-art, you know, 10 years ago, but may not be in four years. So we're actively continuing looking at that plant to upgrade it to make sure we meet all state and federal regulations. And ongoing water quality regulations, those continue to change. If EPA, federal government, or the state of California decide to lower certain water quality parameters, then physical changes would have to be made to that plant so it meets those new standards. And that would essentially mean more capital costs for new technologies to remove certain contaminants.
So is that still considered one of the state-of-the-art around the region?
I've been in the industry for over 20 years, and that's probably one of the most advanced systems I've ever seen.
That's, that's interesting. I'm glad you brought up the reference to the water as well, so, all righty. How much do, do we purchase a lot of water from Metropolitan still?
Through Metropolitan, we, we purchase replenishment water. I would say Valley County Water District, the portion that we serve into Baldwin Park, about one-third of our water is from replenishment, which comes through upper San Gabriel District, through the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California. So it goes through Met, through upper, to us, to go back into the ground. So we don't physically take, we have the ability to take Met water coming from a Met treatment facility. But currently, right now, we take what we call raw water, and we just allow it to percolate into the ground to recharge the groundwater basin. If you actually look on the 605 and the 210 right now, you might notice some of the basins there that are full of water.
Yes.
That is water currently being replenished into the groundwater basin at this moment.
But what is that, is that coming up from the mountains, or is that coming out of?
That water, I believe, and maybe Director Contreras can correct me, I believe that is water coming from USG III, which is essentially water that can be from Northern California. There's different sources where you can get water to spread it into the ground, but I believe that source is coming from Northern California.
I was running through their Saturday, almost took a dip in there, but I didn't want to get caught. Because that's, I mean, that's pretty wide open.
I'm glad I didn't read about that in the paper.
Yeah. All right. I want to thank you for the presentation. Excellent.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank all the board members as well. All right, thank you very much. All righty, so at this point, I don't think we have any other presentations. At this point, I'll open up the public communication. Anyone wishing to speak, you have approximately three minutes.
Mayor, before we continue, may I take the floor for a second?
Vice Mayor Susan Rubio.
Well, just before we go, you usually ask, but you didn't, so I will take the liberty. I want to close, make sure that we close on behalf of the young lady that lost her life in the tragedy in Charlottesville. And I think her, her name is Heather Hayers. And of course, not only her, there's a lot of victims in terms of a lot of serious injuries. So we don't know what the devastation will be at the end of the day, but there's a lot of people struggling to survive. And so we want to send our prayers out to the family and all the victims. And of course, make sure that we all understand that we don't condone that kind of behavior. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, you know, and I'm glad, I'm glad you brought that up. I mean, to me, I'm saddened the fact that we're seeing a division in the entire country. And it's really sad, because it's almost like you're living back in the areas of the 1940s, 50s, or say the 60s, or even more so the early 70s, when I saw what transpired with the busing that took place in the city of Los Angeles. I think that unfortunately, our president needs to understand that the nation as a whole is not one color. It's multicolor. And I think that California in itself says presidents over all the other states where this is an area where that you could literally get to meet everyone from around the planet. And I think that's what makes us so unique. And I hope that he reaches out to the entire country and sends a positive message. It's unfortunate that he decided to wait three days after, and it just didn't seem like he really meant what he said. And I'm also disgusted for the comment that he made to a national hero, and that's John McCain, Senator from Arizona, who he at one time claimed was not a hero because he got caught. And that, that is not right for a president to make those type of comments under any circumstances. He is a hero, as far as I'm concerned, and a fighter. And we need to respect this man who has undergone surgery for cancer and really, I think, sends a very negative message. And I think both parties are divided, or whatever party, because to me, we're one America, and that's what we need to respect, and that's important for all of us regardless. And I'm glad you brought that up, Vice Mayor, because it's important to note that a young individual, her life was taken. And it's not about any particular color, you know, I mean, just the negative things they say against our brothers, our Jewish brothers and sisters, and the comments that are made of every other race, it's unacceptable. And I just hope that, that we all are able to unite and make this country as we know, because it's, it's the best country to live in on the planet Earth, as far as I'm concerned. So let me just say that hopefully we'll, we'll head in a different path. All right.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Cruzbaca.
I too would just like to say some of the comments that were made by our president in regards to that it was both parties' fault, instead of take saying, my condolences to the families and those that have suffered, not only in this tragedy, but many tragedies throughout the world. It's not about a party, it's about a way of thinking. And it saddens me because I did live in the 60s and the 50s with, fought for women's rights and a lot of the civil rights issues at the time. And to see this happening again after all that marching and all that of being on buses and everything to try to make things right, to see this happening again is a real tragedy. And unless we can change the mindset and become one people, and I know that sounds so cliché-ish, but to become one people, and I think the state of California does a really good job of being very progressive and saying we're not going to stand for it. And I think that we need to just stay together regardless of what party we belong to.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. All right, so at this point, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public communication. Anyone wishing to speak, please state your name. You have approximately three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Julie McCaslin, and I am the Children and Teen Services Librarian at the Baldwin Park Library, where we welcome everyone. So I wanted to let everybody know that it's that time of the year where we have our PennTel bookmark contest. This is for grades kindergarten through 12th grade. And we have entry forums at the library. I've already sent out letters and entry forums to all the schools. The kids are, theme this year is, what's your story? So the kids can design a bookmark and to that theme. And we will pick winners at our library for each age group. And then those winners will be sent to the LA County supervisors, and they will pick winners for each age group from each district. And it's a great one, the ones that are picked by the supervisors, they get to go downtown, they have a ceremony, they get introduced by the supervisors, get their pictures taken. So we want to encourage all the kids to let their creativity show and draw a bookmark for the library. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I want to thank the library for the phenomenal job they do.
Hello, everybody, City Council. You know, lady over here, for you, you people up there, you guys put an assessment on my taxes, and she called it an assessment, and you people put it on my taxes. So you people really are the same as Washington DC. You do the same thing. An assessment, and when we get it, it's on our tax bill. So you, you're doing the same thing. So you can't criticize him, and you can't, and you can't, none of you can. You do the same thing. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12. You do the same thing. Look at it. You just said, Mayor, he ain't supposed to do this, he shouldn't be this, and this, and this. You do the same thing to us 75,000 or 80,000 people here. So what are you complaining about? You do exactly the same thing. I know you're looking at me, see, he's wrong. I'm not wrong. Think about it. When you have your meetings, you give us this paper, it's useless. You don't follow it. I'll tell you why. When you get to the financial report, you go through that like, nobody say anything. We're going to just sign it off, okay it, and then the next one, you do the same thing. Excuse me. You have public communications, you throw it out the window. You don't even know what that is. Only reason you do this one is because you have to do it. Otherwise, you tell everybody, go home, we'll do whatever we want, and we're happy. Going back to this young lady over here that put that tax assessment, even though she didn't call it that, it's still a tax. And you people, you dictators, because that's what you are. I've never seen you, any of you, reject anything that concerns taxes. You never. The gentleman got up about the water district. Now they're saying, we don't have enough water. You know why they say that? So they can raise our water bill. That becomes a dictatorship. It's not because it benefits 70, 80,000 people here. It's because they can add tax money to it without us saying anything about it. So you five people are dictators. Think about it. You're telling everybody out here in this city, you're going to do this like it or not. Mayor, if you ever get voted out, you're going to move out of this city. And what? You're going to leave us in debt. All of you. Going to leave this city in debt. And then you worry about, oh, shucks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, we're along with public communication at this point.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Armando Rodriguez. I am the spokesperson for the International Federation of Hometowns of the origin from the Zacatecas state of Mexico. And I'm here to speak on the Sister City, or otherwise called Sisterhood Agreement that's before you for approval, which covers exciting areas where we have a lot of experience in. As a nonprofit organization, we have hundreds of memberships, membership across the country, and we impact thousands of people. I could go into a lot more detail, but I know I only have three minutes. So to the point of the Sisterhood Agreement, we are excited that Baldwin Park and Nochistlán de Mejía Zacatecas are intending to become sister cities, working around five areas of emphasis, which are migration, economic development, culture, and tourism, health, technology, academic exchanges. And what is very appealing to us is that the two cities are entering into an agreement where both parts are free to agree on the terms, as it should be. And that means that through annual action plans, both are going to agree on the specifics of what is going to take place. We are excited because we have been working for decades on areas that, for example, promote business, the investments, commerce on both parts, both sides of the country, of the border, and areas in health, science, and technology. And, you know, I could, we could, unfortunately, we don't have that much time here that I would love to go into much more detail. Our membership consists of people, residents of Baldwin Park. There's a large community here in Baldwin Park, some of which are present here in the, in the audience. So we're all very excited and hope that you find this to be something advantageous to Baldwin Park. And we're just anxious to get started so that we can have activities in Baldwin Park and involve all of you. And if this gets approved, like it's my, our desire, then you will be hearing from us in, as far as activities and other functions that we would love for you to take place and experience what we do. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And we'll be addressing it further down the agenda. Thank you.
Good evening, Ken Woods. I'm a longtime resident and business owner here in Baldwin Park. For years, my neighbors and I were deprived of parking in front of our own house on the north side of Bedillo because of the lack of parking in the Bedillo Circle apartments. They seemed to always beat us to the parking spots, which then caused us to walk two or three blocks from our house to get a parking spot. So about a little over a year ago, a group of us approached the council, and they graciously made a, a parking restriction from the city limits to Puente on the north side of Bedillo for permit parking only. And each resident got two parking permits, which allowed us to park in front of our own houses for a change. And about every month or so, we have to call the dispatcher, and they graciously send out a couple of officers and give eight or 10 tickets, and then it settles down again, and we get to park in front of our houses again. So this is a constant thing over and over. And we're happy that the police, they always respond very quickly, very thoroughly. Couple of guys get out, slap those tickets on, then we're fine. So now let's fast forward to this new project that's proposed for the, this three-story apartment that's going to be proposed in this area where the park was supposed to be. And as we know, in Baldwin Park, financially, they're not able to put underground parking because it's too expensive. So where are all these people going to park? A three-story apartment? A three-story apartment building and no place to park. Is that same thing going to happen here in the downtown area? I noticed the encroachment of, with the apartments that were built here, that now those people are starting to park on Ramona. And also, I notice, I'm not sure, but aren't they supposed to park on the fourth or fifth level of the parking structure? They got a one-floor, but they're parking on the first and second level. Because you can see them taking their groceries and stuff and walking down the, you know, they don't want to walk down, you know, take the elevator down and do all that walking. So what I'm afraid of is, are we going to have parking for this new project? Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. All right, move along with public communication. Al Contrares.
Good evening, Al Contrares, resident here of Baldwin Park. Just on Mr. Luna's comment, I wasn't going to speak and did I have anything prepared. But Valley County Water and any water industry anywhere in the United States, all of us have an allocation that we must meet. Unfortunately, Valley County Water District does not have the allocation needed to serve all its residents. So if they stayed with their allocation, some of you have been to Mexico and heard, "No agua," there's no water. Valley County Water and every entity here likes to provide their service 24/7. It's something that other countries, other areas do not provide. They all strive, I've been in the industry of utilities for over 35 years with Southern California descent and 20 years with the water industry. So I agree with what one comment that he said, "The water rates are going up." When I started 20 years ago, over 20 years ago, we were able to buy water for about $300 an acre foot. Today, they're running about 700, and that's untreated water, as you heard Jose mention, that after we get it, we still have treatment. So we're growing, as I was mentioning with the last speaker, adding more residents, more connections in the community. So we really don't have a choice of what we do, unless the only choice is, and if everyone in the area, in the state and in the country, be ready to say, "Two, three hours, half a day, or day or two, we ran out of allocation," which none of us want to do. So we had to purchase water. Mr. Mayor, you brought up the issue about the drought. Northern California has no drought. There still has no pack, it's still melting. But is the transportation a cost metropolitan and many other water entities, whether it's coming through the Colorado River or the state water project? Those things cost a lot of money, the transporting, the electricity, and so on and so forth. So unfortunately, it's passed to each and every one of us. None of us want to pay for it. And it's going to get worse, folks. It will get worse. Mark my word. Have a great day.
All right, thank you, Al Contrares, Upper San Gabriel Valley. All right, thank you, good evening.
Hello. My name is Brian Velez. I'm a resident of Baldwin Park. I recently filed an identity theft police report with the Baldwin Park Police Department. The police officer who took my report was very helpful and understanding. When I asked the police department for a copy of my report, I was told the fee was $55. This fee can also be seen in the city police department website. I was told by the police department that this fee is decided by city council. $55 for a police report. City of Arcadia reports are free for the first 25 pages. City of Azusa, no charge for the first four pages. After that, 20 cents for each additional page. City of West Covina, no charge. I was able to get my copy of the police report by requesting it from the city clerk at the reasonable price of $1.60. How many Baldwin Park residents have been charged $55 for a report that should only cost about $1? How many victims of crimes have been charged $55 because they didn't know to contact the city clerk? I have called and left messages twice for the community relations representative at the police department. My calls were never returned. What makes the city of Baldwin Park feel so comfortable to charge $55 for a police report? Charging $55 also goes against the California Public Records Act. I request an explanation of where this $55 came from, and request the city update the police department website fees with appropriate and fair pricing.
All right, thank you very much. At the end of public communication, I will have the chief comment on that, if you want to stick around. Thank you very much. All right, move along with public communication.
Haven't seen some of you for the past three months. One of the things I got to complain is Manny Correo, you're in charge of all the parks in the area. Walnut Creek has never been done right. The water system is not working right. The trees are dying in there. There's around 12 trees and butches that are dying in there. Okay? The decking and everything that you guys put, the bridge and everything, that wood is cracking already. Okay? I don't know how many times you go over there and check on the parks, but it's not done right. Okay? Another thing is on Barnes Park, I get a call from some people over there, and they tell me, "The park is completely dark, and we already called the police department to come and check it out because there's a couple of cars in the baseball, the basketball courts with their lights, they're playing basketball, but they put their cars in the grass area, you know. Trash all over the place." Now we go to Solis Park. That's another big problem. Drug dealing, you name it, you want it, you can get it from there. Okay? You're supposed to have cameras all over the place, you haven't. Okay? Another thing, you drive around on a city vehicle, and it doesn't have no emblem. Are you ashamed to say that you work for the city of Baldwin Park? I only don't blame you, I blame Shannon too. Shannon's supposed to be the CEO. Have you ever gone outside and looked at all these parks or anything, Shannon? I don't think you have. You would see the problem that we're having. I haven't been to Morgan Park lately, but a couple of people have called me up, and they tell me that the hottest days of the season, you guys close the doors down at 1:00. It's hot, it's around 100 degrees outside, and you guys throw all those young people like me outside. Some, the mayor used to keep an eye on it, you know. You know, and I'm going to have a party in one of the parks, and I have a friend that has a bar, and can I get a special permit?
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. All right, move along with the public communication.
Greg Tuttle, business owner. First of all, I want to state you have on there about going with the parade and going to take business improvement money, again, $36,000. We don't get any benefit from it. It goes down Baldwin Park Boulevard. It doesn't go down Main, anything to show any businesses. Start paying your own share and use that money that's for the businesses to improve the business, facelift them on Main Street. Don't sit there and waste money on a parade for you guys to get your ego boost riding in a car and waving at everybody down Baldwin Park Boulevard. Whippee, doesn't pay our bills. Now, it seems to be, I was reading the agenda, Monica Garcia is confused. So I'm going to help some confusion here. She has a problem with the decorum. Well, if she kept her mouth shut and let the other council member talk, there wouldn't have been an issue. And if anybody wants to see this, it's on YouTube, because we taped it and we put it on YouTube so everybody can take their own opinion of it. But the thing is, there's Cruzbaca, back in the first of the year, when all this thing was getting out of hand and all the arguing at the council meeting, she did the Robert Rules of Order. She tried to get it passed. Mayor, you voted it down. Pacheco, you voted it down, and so did you, Monica. You don't want any controls. You don't want controls, then don't complain. And the whole thing started by Monica interrupting. I was here, I sat through the whole thing. We got tape of it. The thing is, you need to give common courtesy. And it's slanderous and lies. Every time Monica opens her eyes, slanderous and a lie. But do we sit here and complain? No. But when she got picked on, and Mayor, you couldn't even control her. I forget how many times you beat on your hammer. You know, this thing has to end. Monica is not the prima donna here. And Monica needs to control her mouth when other people are talking. It's simple as that. But she can't seem to do that. And then, Mayor, you need to be more forceful. She should have been evicted because she couldn't shut up. So if we're going to have a decorum, let's go with the Robert Rules of Order, and let's do that. If not, then it's a free-for-all every time we come in here. Now then, Monica, the thing with the, oh, you know what? That's all I'm going to say.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate that. Okay, move along with public communication. Margarita, you coming up? No le corras. Take your time, we'll wait for you here.
I just want to report that the fountain that is in Ramona and at the exit of the freeway, it's not working, it doesn't have any water. And I know that we paid a lot of money for that fountain to look pretty, but I don't go by there, that side a lot, but the other day it was coming from, I don't know, I don't even know where. But I got out at 6:05, and the first time that I saw it was a dry fountain. So, you know, I know it's recyclable water, it's the same water, so we're not going to waste water. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, at this point, anyone else wishing to speak? All righty, come on up.
Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, Chief. God bless all of you brothers and sisters. Real quick comments, I'm just here listening and observing. I could probably start off with this one, is that you guys were talking about what great job you guys were doing and all that's on it, because last time I was here, it sounded like you guys were coming together as a unit. And it says, and what I'm saying is, let another man praise you and not your own mouth, a stranger, and not your own lips. So don't pat yourself on the back. I say again, we all come together as a team, as a unit. Now, I thank all these brothers here, the officers that come out every day. I'm a veteran, when I run into people, they say, "Thank you for your service." Well, I met some real good brothers, because I say, "Thank you for being out there, thank you for your service. Thank you guys for being out here." I couldn't be one of you, you know. But I'm just saying, I think what we're lacking here is unity. Something I remembered, years ago, I worked at a mustard, at a mustard facility, and the way the Spirit of God spoke to me was this, "Have you seen the size of a mustard seed? Really tiny." What I'm saying, I'm getting back to this. We used to lift them up, and there was, who knows how many were there, that they weighed a good 4,000 pounds, 3,000 pounds, let's say. My point is this, not like this, like this. You guys are the leaders. It says, "Let your light so shine before men, that they may see the good works of the Lord in you." And you don't get a lamp and put it under bed or in the closet and hide it. Let your light shine. People are watching you. Proverbs 15:3 says, "The eyes of the Lord are in every place." Trust me, there's people watching you as you go, just like these brothers come and complain. I think we all have a legit complaint, but I think we should stop complaining and getting work done. You work for the city, let you guys, you shine. These guys are working all for you. Tell them, pat them on the back, "Good job." That's all I'm saying. Now, real quick, one observation, I walk all the time. Behind Walmart, there's a curb along the freeway, I think the corner of it is Vinland and Garvey. There's a division there with apartments. I see people walking, youngsters, ladies. I think the city could go into some kind of development. They've got, if you get together with the owner of the apartments, you could probably put a three-foot sidewalk there, so these people that choose to walk will walk safely and not on the street. Just an observation. Push buttons for crosswalks, I walk. Wires, live wires, I reported to one of these officers the other evening, and it hasn't gotten fixed. I'm not putting down the brothers, but that's not their job. Get somebody that works the city or whoever takes care of it, because these kids have a tendency to do this. Two wires are live, if there's light, if there's light up on top, there's live power on these things. Just like safety.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Anyone else wishing to speak on our public communication? If not, at this point, real quick, want to address, we could address what Mr. Woods came up here with reference to the actual parking facility and things of that nature. So, of course, yep, and I hear what you're saying about those particular apartments, and that's something we'll be discussing, of course, in the near future. Would, Margarita, I know you mentioned about the actual water itself, that is part of the project, so eventually you will see water circulating again in that particular area as well. I know that Mr. Luna mentioned about the taxes. Well, it wasn't actual tax, I mean, it was part of what the city turns, in turn, charges, but it's like a one-time, it's not something that's continuous, something that you would be charged with. And I think that, referencing the $55, so at this point, I'm going to have the chief, if you could comment in reference to the report and the actual cost itself.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. While I can't speak for the other cities, it's been a long practice with the city of Baldwin Park. In my 36 years that I've been here, we've been doing it for many of those years. Basically, we're allowed to do it by law. We get a lot of requests, not just from citizens and non-citizens, we get a lot of requests from civil attorneys, we get a lot of requests from outside sources that are looking for traffic collision reports, release reports for storage cars, and they all come with different prices. What they are is, we're recouping the cost by law that it costs us to produce the document. We have to do by law a time and motion study to cost out what it costs us to produce that particular document. And then it has to be approved by council in terms of, to recoup the cost for it. So it's been a long, it's been a long time practice. Yes, you can get the documents with the Freedom of Information Act if you want to go through the city clerk's office, it's another way to get it. But if you go directly to the police department, that's what we charge to produce that particular document.
You know, what I want to do is agendaize that, and let's discuss it amongst the city council to possibly make some changes there, because it is. And let's survey what the neighboring cities, as the gentleman mentioned up here, if we could bring that and find out what the surrounding cities in the San Gabriel Valley are actually charging for a report, because that's definitely pretty high for someone to try and get a report at that cost. So thank you, Chief, for that information.
Thank you.
Council members, have anything else? All right, so at this point, we're going to go ahead and go into the consent calendar. We have items one through 10. Council members wishing to pull any item?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Cruzbaca?
I would like to pull item eight and nine.
Okay, eight and nine.
Mayor.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Thank you, I'd like to pull item number 10.
Number 10, okay. Councilmembers wishing to pull any other items? If not, I'll go ahead and make a motion to move for consent calendar items, consent calendar with the exception of items eight, nine, and 10. That is my motion?
Second.
Second? Who's second?
I do.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco? Any objections? See, now, so move. All right, we'll go to the first one, which is the request by Councilmember Cruzbaca, the contractual annual rate adjustments for solid waste fees due to CPI increase. The Councilmember Cruzbaca.
Yes, Mayor, and I should have been, in all fairness, I should have discussed this, but it's come to my attention after I pulled it. I would like to bring this back to the September meeting, only because I did get several letters and complaints from some of our residents that, and I know that Terry Muse is in the audience, and I would like to discuss with her or the people from Waste Management. Our residents have a problem with trying to reach someone that they can speak to in a timely manner for customer service. They feel that their offices are in Live Oak. Some of them actually went to the office in Live Oak and found that it was boarded up, and whoever did come to the door told them that there was no customer service, that they would have to call a 1-800 number, which they said that it was too tedious because they were kept on hold for a long time. I believe one of the residents did send a letter to Terry Muse, and she did send a very nice reply. But I would like to sort of explore and see if it's possible for Waste Management to have an office or Management to have an office or someone there that would, Monday or Tuesday or whatever day it is, so that our residents know that they can speak to a live person instead of dealing with someone in Arizona or wherever the 1-800 number is. So if we can please bring this back and discuss this.
You wanna make a motion for September?
Yes, I'll make a motion to bring this back in September. And in the meantime, if it's okay for me to meet with Terri, and maybe our staff, to discuss that, if you please.
All right. I'll go ahead and second. So, yes.
Before we move forward with that motion, I just wanna mention that this increase is separate from the item that is being addressed by Cruzbaca. And we have to keep in mind that this was part of a 10-year franchise agreement. And the longer that we kick this off, the more it will affect our residents, because it will be taken retroactively when it is approved. And then I don't know what the alternative to that would be, city attorney, if we didn't approve this, I don't know what the alternatives would be.
Legal counsel?
Yes, Councilmember, excuse me, Garcia. This is a contractual term in our agreement, so there, we really don't have an option of not approving it. If we did, then we would be in violation of the agreement, and of course, could lead to other actions.
So, again, I think that it's something that we need to take into consideration. The longer that we kick this down the road, the more it's gonna cost our residents on a retroactive basis. So I will support the motion, but I just would add that it's probably more judicious if we take up the item today, and it would probably be in the best interest of our residents.
I think, yeah, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Susan Rubio.
And of course, we're all trying to do what's best for residents, but if we consider what Cruzbaca just said, I've had a lot of complaints as well, and this is the only time we have the opportunity, since it's a 10-year contract, to sit down with Waste Management and discuss these issues, especially because I believe the elderly are the ones that are having the issue, if I'm not mistaken. They need things taken out, and they can't reach a person. So I think it's been a month. I don't think it's gonna be a big impact, but this is the one opportunity we have to talk about service. It's a 10-year contract with this company. They need to be responsive to our elderly and our residents. So I say we move it to the next meeting. It's not a big deal, but at least we have Waste Management sitting down with us and talking about how we can fix that problem. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor, at this point, there's been a motion. Councilmember Cruzbaca?
I am very aware that we have a contractual obligation to Waste Management. But however, I do want to take this opportunity to be able to sit down with them as well. And I think, I do not feel that it's going to be such an impact on our residents and their fees, because we do have a contract that we are contractually obligated to. So I would like to, I would still like to keep my motion, that I wanna bring it back to the September meeting.
Yes, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
First of all, I respect the opinion of all my council members, even though I may disagree or agree with them sometimes. But are these issues, have they been brought to the Waste Management before? I just think that if we hold off this vote now, you know, we could still talk to Waste Management. I mean, we still have to either approve it or disapprove it. You know, if you didn't get the results you wanted, Councilmember Cruzbaca, in talking to Waste Management, are you gonna not vote for it? Or what, you know, what would be your position then? I mean, we're trying to just move the contract along, because we did agree to it. But I still think we could work out on some of the issues that I think are very important, and understand I would be very concerned if residents called me and weren't getting service. But we do have representative here in the audience, if maybe we could get a response from them. Or do you feel you need to have time aside and discuss it more further and not use it here?
I would like to discuss it further. I mean, why take up some of our...
Let me just say, the Councilmember Cruzbaca made a motion. I second it. So let's go back to the original one. So at this point, are there any objections?
So this is to move it to the next meeting?
Yes, to move to September. All right. If there's no objections, so move. All right. So at this point, thank you. At this point, we'll go over to item nine, which is the authorization to sell police service dog, Dijonos. So at this point, Chief, or who's handling this?
That was me.
Oh, that was you. All right.
And I just wanna say that, you know, I'm an animal lover, and so I'm really glad that Officer Gamboa, who has been working with Django for such a long time, and it is, he is going to a good home. And I just wanna say thank you for all the service, all the years of service to the city of Baldwin Park. And I know he's going to a great home, and that's a really nice thing to hear. So thank you very much for your service, for this wonderful dog. I did get to meet him once, so thank you so very much to his service to the city of Baldwin Park. So I make a motion for us to go ahead and approve item number nine.
Okay, there's a motion by Councilmember Cruzbaca, second by Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. Any objections? See, no, so move. Item number 10, which is requested by Councilmember Monica Garcia, seconding an ordinance number 1400 and 1401 relating to an amendment to the city municipal called on medical and adult use of cannabis zoning, 1 N I C, and rules and regulations for manufacturing, cultivation, and distribution thereof, and continuing the ban on dispensaries. So at this point, Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second reading for this ordinance, which was taken up, I believe it was August 7th, and, or was it the 10th? Okay, it was August 10th. And so we've already had our conversation around this item. It moved forward with the four and one. I dissented over concerns that I don't feel that we've really completed a thorough community outreach, and I still would love to see more outreach to our residents. There are about, I would estimate, maybe 16,000 to 20,000 households in the city of Baldwin Park. And until we've touched a majority of them and have given the opportunity for input, I am reluctant to move forward at this time with this ordinance. It doesn't mean that in the future, I wouldn't, you know, be supportive. But at this point in time, I am not comfortable, given the limited community outreach. Second, I know that the Los Angeles County Police Officers Association, or Chiefs Association, has opposed cannabis. And I'd like to understand what are their concerns and how we plan to mitigate those concerns. And I'd like to hear from our police department about that, which I have not heard. So at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and oppose, you know, I'm not going to support this motion or this ordinance, and that will be my position.
All right. So at this point, okay, so at this point, can we entertain a motion to pass?
Motion to approve.
Okay, there's a Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, a second by Councilmember Cruzbaca. Any objections?
May I?
Hold on. Legal counsel, go ahead.
Yes, because this is so important, I think we should do the full reading on this motion.
I'll go ahead and do that. So have Councilmember Ricardo read it out.
My motion is...
Item one and two.
For item 10, our staff recommends item one, approve and adopt the title by title only, and waive the second reading ordinance number 1400 entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Baldwin Park, California," adding chapter 127, "Medical and Adult Use Commercial Cannabis," of Title 11, "Business Regulation to the City of Baldwin Park Municipal Code," and waive any further reading thereof. And item two, approve and adopt by title only, and waive the second reading ordinance number 1401, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Baldwin Park, California," amending Baldwin Park Municipal Code Table 153.00, I mean, 153.050.020, "Allowing Medical and Adult Cannabis Cultivation, Distribution, and Manufacturing Uses, the deletion of subsections 153.120.33.C. and 153.120.330.D. of, let's try here, of the City's Municipal Zoning Code, and waive any further reading thereof."
All right. So at this point, there was a motion by Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. It was seconded by Councilmember Cruzbaca. Any objections?
Yes.
Okay, one objection by Councilmember...
Mayor, may I hold just for a discussion real quickly? I just wanna hear from our legal counsel, if I may. Can you just answer this question for me? Is it possible to bring forward amendments if there were a need as we move forward through the process, and we find that maybe either industry or community standards change, depending on, you know, this industry changes so rapidly? Can we bring forward amendments?
Excuse me. Yes, Vice Mayor Rubio, we are able to amend this ordinance at any point in time, as long as we follow the procedure that the city has for those types of things.
Okay, thank you. And with that, Mayor, continue. Thank you.
So at this point, it was, yes, Councilmember Cruzbaca?
Real fast, I just need to clarify something. Our staff worked really hard at putting all this together. There were five or six workshops or community meetings that were taking place at different times of the day and at different locations. The chief was present, the chief, our CEO, our planning, Amy from planning. There were many staff members that went there, as well as some presentations that were made, so that people could ask questions and would be a part of the discussions, and to see what was going to happen and what it would entail. Councilmember Garcia never attended any of those meetings, because I attended several of them. So for her to say that there wasn't outreach, or that there wasn't enough, I feel that there's still room, of course, for growth and discussion. However, there was a lot of staff time and a lot of meetings that took place before this decision was made. Many meetings, lots of suggestions about the policy and how it was going to. I met with several labor unions to see their input in regards to some of the issues or points, or how some of the workers would be treated. And I felt that we came up with something that would sort of answer everybody's questions, and still be able to keep Baldwin Park ahead of the game here. It was never rushed, and so I am very comfortable with this at this time, and especially if we are able to have discussion further in the future, that adds to that as well. So thank you.
And I'll just make one more comment. I'm sorry. And just to add to what Councilmember Cruzbaca added, you know, going back to the labor unions, which was something that they were asking us to do, is to add several, to make changes to the original language, which we did. We added, I believe, nine of the suggestions that they asked us to add, and we did. We were able to add what they wanted us to. So just to add to that, there was very thorough discussion, a lot of meetings, and we were mindful of the workers and the ability to make sure that they're taken care of. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Getting back, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco made the motion, seconded by Councilmember Cruzbaca. There was an objection by Councilmember Monica Garcia. So at this point, I will ask roll call from our city clerk, Ms. Avila.
Councilmember Pacheco?
Thank you.
Yes? Councilmember Baca?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
No.
Mayor Lizano?
Yes.
Yes, the motion passes for one. All right. So at this point, we're gonna go over to the successor agency to dissolve Community Development Commission of the City of Baldwin Park's warrants and demands. So, one moment. Get that for me. Alright, at this point, I'll go ahead and make a motion for consent of the successor agency.
Second.
Second. Any objections? See, no, so move. At this point, I'll go ahead and, we've got that. I'm gonna go to item number 11, which is a request for allocations of fundings for the Celebrate Baldwin Park Parade. So at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion for the funding of the annual Baldwin Park Parade. That is my motion.
Second.
Any objections?
Can you clarify where the funding is coming from, please?
Sure. Yeah, the funding, go ahead, Mr. Manny Carrillo, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Mayor, and city council members. The funding is from the Business Improvement District, and the total amount is fiscal impact of the staff report is $35,900.
Manny, I can't hear you. There's something going on there, so, oops.
Check one two. Okay, I'll speak a little louder. Excuse me. The fiscal impact, the fiscal impact pursuant to the staff report to fund the Celebrate Baldwin Park Parade is approximately $35,903 to be charged to the Business Improvement Tax Fund. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Council, Vice Mayor Susan Rubio?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Cruzbaca, didn't mean to interrupt you. I just wanted to add, you know, that I will continue to object, paying for this from the Business Improvement Tax. This money is meant to help the small businesses, to highlight their businesses, and to ensure that that money is used for them. So if we're gonna move forward with this, I insist that we take it out of the general fund. Let's leave the business tax alone. Thank you, Mayor.
Right. Okay, yes, Councilmember Cruzbaca?
I also have a question, and I do agree with Vice Mayor Rubio, but I would like to know, how much money is in the Business Improvement Tax Fund?
The funding that's there now?
What is the balance in the funding there?
We have about $150,000 at this point, estimate.
I would feel more comfortable taking it out of the general fund and doing something to either fix the facades or something to promote some business, so that we could keep generating business revenue, so that we can continue having some of these parades or other events that we have here in the city. I agree with Vice Mayor Rubio.
So may I make a substitute, I don't know if I could amend this, to say I will approve it if we take it out of the general fund and not the Business Improvement Tax. That is my motion.
We're gonna substitute the motion. So at this point, that's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any objections? So there's no objections? All right. So at this point, we'll go ahead and...
Repeat that.
Yes, what we're doing, there's a substitute to allocate the funds out of the general fund versus the business, the business organization funding. So...
Well, Mayor, according to Rose Tam, and I'll let Rose speak to this, because she looked at our fund, and, you know, we reviewed the budget recently. Her recommendation is to take this out of the Business Improvement versus the general fund. And Rose, would you like to speak to that at all?
Hi, good evening, everybody. What I want to mention is, back in July, that we all came together and went over the new fiscal budget for 1718. And at that point, we came up with a balanced budget in general fund. With this, we allocated to general fund, it will put about $35,000 to the general fund in deficit.
Hi. Okay, yes, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
I think that this year, we'll look at it, you know, the way it is, as staff has proposed it through the business tax. But I think next year, as we see more revenues coming in, I think we'll be more in the positive, then we could start to look at alleviating the business tax and going more toward the general fund. Well, I don't know, can we go half and half? I mean, is there enough, if we split it, half business tax, half general fund?
If that's the city's council's direction, that might be...
Well, I mean, is there funds on both sides that could support the parade? Does it have to all be on business tax and some maybe some general fund?
Yeah, that will reduce the deficit in the general fund.
Oh, we have a deficit.
If we put it in, if we share half and half.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right, thank you.
Mayor, can I add to that? I just heard right now that staff recommended that. They did not recommend that. We couldn't afford it, and we were forcing them to come up with the money, so they suggested the Business Improvement Tax, but they did not recommend it. We couldn't afford it, and I agree with Councilmember Cruzbaca. She insisted, which we've done many times before, that we get sponsors. The businesses have always sponsored these events, so I don't understand why we keep taking it from the Business Improvement Tax. I think we could move forward with the parade, because it's not about not having the parade. It's just, why are we draining the Business Improvement Tax? That is for the businesses, and how to make sure that they're getting a benefit from that tax. After all, they're paying for it. I insist that we have the parade, but figure out how to get sponsors or another funding source. Thank you, Mayor.
So at this point, let's go back. So your substitute motion...
Wait, may I just, I just...
Oh, go ahead.
I apologize, Councilwoman Rubio. It does say on the staff report, page 11, fiscal impact. The fiscal impact to fund the parade is $35,903 to be charged to the Business Improvement Tax. I mean, that's where that idea came from, just for clarification. But nonetheless, Mayor, thank you.
Yes, okay, thank you very much. At this point, the Vice Mayor made a substitute motion to allocate the funding for the parade, the Baldwin Park Annual Parade, from the business sector, totaling, from the general fund, excuse me, totaling $35,000. It was also seconded by Councilmember Cruzbaca. Are there any objections?
I would object to that.
Okay, so there's one objection. Okay, so at this point, Madam City Clerk, we'll go ahead and roll call.
Yes.
Councilmember Baca?
Yes.
Councilwoman, sorry. Councilwoman Garcia?
No.
No. Councilman, Mayor Lizano, I'm so sorry.
No. Okay, so the motion, the motion loses, the actual, is 3-2. So at this point, I will go ahead and make a motion that we allocate the funding from the business sector. That is my motion.
Second.
Well, business sector, you mean the Business Improvement District.
Improvement District, excuse me. So second? Okay, any objections?
Yes.
All right. At this point, there's one objection, so we'll go ahead and do roll calls. I will have Lehanda Avila do roll call.
So Pacheco, second that, correct?
That is, no, Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Lizano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garcia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Baca?
No.
Councilwoman Pacheco? Councilwoman Pacheco?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Rubio?
No.
Thank you.
All right, so the motion passes, 3-2. So the allocations of the actual funding itself will be through the Business Improvement District. All right, so, yes, Councilmember Cruzbaca?
I just want to reiterate, and I need to explain something. The parade is a wonderful thing. I remember as a little girl going to see the parade when the parade was just a couple of people and the Baldwin Park marching band, Baldwin Park High School marching band. And it is, it is a wonderful event. It's a lot of fun, anytime that we get our community together or even outside communities together with us. However, I would really like for us to be very aggressive and see if from now until October, we could not get at least some sponsors so that some of that could be paid back into the Business Improvement Tax and recoup some of that monies. I know that there's a lot of wonderful businesses out there or a lot of sponsors that would like to come forward. We just have to, and I'd hate to put more work on you and your staff, Manny, but I think that, I think that it would be really, really to our advantage to look at and to let them know that this is going to be a yearly thing, and we're not coming to them just once. We're going to be knocking on their door every year. So I would really like for you to do that and your staff. Thank you.
All right. All right, thank you very much. All right, at this point, I'm going to item 12, which is the designation as a sister city to the municipality of Nochizlan de Mejia Zacatecas, Mexico. So I did have a question, and reviewing the actual sister city documentations, I want to be able to remove article...
What, agenda item are you speaking of, Mayor?
12.
Yes. We're just going to, we're going to remove it completely. Okay, let's go over, what's the page number in this? Article eight. The, where it reads, the finances, the party shall finance the activities referred to and present an agreement with the assigned resources and perspective budget according to the availability terms of the legislation. Each party shall pay expenses related to the participation except in case that alternate financial mechanism may use for specific activities if considered. So what I want to do is remove that, that particular section from the actual sister city documents that we have.
Can I have all yours, please? I need to see it. Besides that, I'm sorry, I didn't want to talk into the mic. I have some questions, but I don't have to report with me. Do you mind?
Oh, yeah, 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 here.
Mayor, I also have.
Yes.
And maybe legal counsel can clarify. I didn't see anything on here that says that they have to represent the city of Baldwin Park in a certain manner when they're, after all, they are partnering with us. And I know that other sister cities, including the one here in Baldwin Park, there's a certain way that they conduct themselves and so forth in order to represent the city of Baldwin Park. And I don't see any agreement on here that says anything like that in what manner they should represent the city.
And I have other questions as well.
Is it in there?
Councilmember Baca, I don't recall seeing that in the sister city agreement expressly.
I would like to see something, even if it's brief, just saying, you know, that their conduct and so forth, after all, they are representing the city of Baldwin Park, that their conduct and so forth should be in a certain manner.
If you have some language that you'd like to present, we could add that in right now if you like. Or would you like me to take a shot at it?
I don't have it with me.
Okay, I'll take a shot at it.
Thank you.
Well, I have other concerns, and it's something that I think I would like to bring back because it wasn't until I read it, Mayor, you know, I'm glad you took that article out. But if you realize the way this is written, the city is entering into a contract with sister cities, and it discusses us providing staff, providing a timeline, providing finances, providing an agreement of what we're all responsible for. That is not how we've been functioning with our other sister cities. They took responsibilities, and they're responsible for the financing. They're responsible for everything else. And I don't mind if you want to go this route with this sister city, but then I insist that we provide the same financial support to the other sister city that's been around for 25 years, I believe, Al. Correct me if I'm wrong? 201, right? And so this contract is with us, the city, and not the organization. So I don't think we should take this responsibility because it talks about our staff providing all of this.
Well, first of all, the brief comments that I've had with them, I mean, we have no direct obligations, and that's one of the reasons why I want to, that we're moving item eight. We will, and from the beginning, as I said, they need to be independent and similar to the current sister city that we operate with.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Monica Garcia?
In the staff report, under fiscal impact, it says there is no fiscal impact associated with this item.
Yes, legal counsel, go ahead.
Councilmember Garcia, that was actually an error based on how the, I didn't do the staff report, but based on how the agreement is written. So I spoke with Mayor Lozano, and he agreed to take out that financing aspect. So now that is true. If that, if that section eight is taken out, then there is no financial impact on the city. So that is correct if we take that article eight out.
So then we'll be okay there?
No, Mayor, may I clarify something? That is the financing part, but let's look at all the other articles. There's one, Article three. It talks about us providing support for conferences, seminars. I mean, at this point, there's no impact, but when we have these conferences, that in the contract that we will have, there will be an impact. It also discusses right here very clearly. It says that we are going to be responsible for materials, personnel, and financial resources under a separate article. That's Article 10, Annual Action Program, that we're going to be responsible for providing all these programs. In particular, staff. It says right here, we're going to provide personnel. That doesn't seem like it's separate, so I just think it needs a little bit more of an evaluation. Can we bring it back so we can clarify?
Well, you know what, let me bring up Armando. Do you have time real quick to the interpretation of this particular area?
Which article is that? What are you reading?
Article 10.
No, I know that, but which article?
Article eight. So for the sister city, so we're going to remove that item eight, just to know. And as, I think we discussed before, because the city's not going to have any obligation. We're totally independent. That's the way we operate with the current sister city. I know that the Zacatecano group here in Baldwin Park, I know they're extremely involved, and I know they do a lot of things independently. They raise money on their own, which is basically what we're going to end up having to do. Would you, did you have any comments, or is that...
Yes, well, first and foremost, I think it would make, or hopefully make everybody comfortable, that this was written, this comes from a, the model that is from, was the equivalent of the State Department of Mexico. This is their recommendation as far as the format, the contents. However, anything that you feel that it's something you're not comfortable with, that could be amended. As far as the finances, Mayor, if I understood your comment correctly, we as an organization, nonprofit organization, we're a 501(c)(3). There's two of them, two of them based here in LA, one in Orange County. We do a lot of fundraising. We provide a lot of the financials for activities that take place on this side of the border and also for projects on the other side of the border. We've supported Nochizlan de Mejia for many years financially. There's a program that we provide 25% of the funding, and the Mexican government provides 75% of the funding, as an example. So we have grown to be very comfortable where we do fundraisers ourselves. We would work hand in hand with Baldwin Park so that the burden on the city would not be as perhaps it's represented in this, in this contract. Anything that you deem, and this is coming also from the mayor of Nochizlan, he feels that anything that you want to amend, they're certainly going to entertain that. And ultimately, it needs to be approved also from the State Department in Mexico since it's official at the federal level.
Are you guys the Chilangos that dance around in the parades?
I'm sorry?
Are they, are you guys like the Zacatecano? Do you guys have Chilangos, you know, the dancers that come and dance once in a while at the park?
We don't, I don't recall unless I'm misthinking that. There's a, we bring people from other states. And in fact, the Zacatecanos were the very first that created these organizations, and I'm proud to say that was part of that organization. Since, we have made this movement a national one where all the states of Mexico, within Mexico, are eligible to become part of this program that has this mutual funding to provide projects. More to your question, we as Zacatecanos have not, to my recollection, bring the Chilangos, but we invite each other's organizations, and we go to their functions, and they come to ours. So in Mexico City, there are equivalent organizations that do the similar things that we do. So we're all a large family that we, we work together.
Okay, Mayor, so let me just clarify. And the reason I say that, because I've been very involved with the other sister city that we've had, and they're also 501(c), and I know because they fundraise for everything they have to do. And we work exactly like you guys do, but I think I would be comfortable stopping at Article three. And everything up to there talks about cooperation, cooperation. And at any given time, like when we have visitors, we always are willing to provide vans to help, venues to support, but it's more of a collaboration and open for discussion versus having it as a contract where it specifically says we're responsible. So again, we're all about, you know, collaborating with you. But Mayor, if you don't mind, I think up till Article three, everything talks about mutual collaboration, cooperation, discussions. Past Article three, everything talks about financial, our obligation, you know, financially. So if we can stop in Article three, I think that we can work it out. I mean, definitely, we want to support and help you with financing as we can, but I don't want to obligate the city to do this if we, we don't have time.
Right, and you know what, the legal counsel's advising me that if we change the may to shall...
Or shall to may.
Excuse me, from shall to may, then there's no obligation by the city.
Yes.
So, and I know that you guys got a major function. I believe the mayor's going to be down here in a couple of weeks, you know, so I would be comfortable in amending that, passing it here tonight with those amendments. So we have no obligation whatsoever, other than working, you know, attending, and then you, I mean, you guys do major fundraisers in the city already, so there.
Mayor, if that's your motion, I'll say...
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we change out the contract, removing the shall to may, which does not obligate the city to any contractual agreements with the possible sister city, which Nochizlan de Mejia Zacatecas. All right, so that is my motion. Honorable Mayor?
I may add.
Legal counsel, one moment. Councilmember Monica Garcia, yes?
Does your motion also include eliminating completely Article eight?
Yes, that's right. That is, let me, let me stand, yes. Article eight will be removed permanently from the actual, the actual contract that's being provided. All right, so there's a second by Councilmember Monica Garcia. Any objections? If not, ahua, no, excuse me. Okay, all right, thank you, we'll move forward.
Armando, oh, I'm sorry, are you done?
Yes, go ahead.
Armando, so anytime you have events, please invite us. We always like to participate and cooperate, so we're happy to do that. And if you need support, even financial, there's always a discussion to be had, and if we can, we'll be happy to help you.
Great, and we'll flood you with flyers. And I just want to add that the mayor of Nochizlan, the spirit of this agreement is to be, like you indicated, may. It's the shals obey to the model that's given by the State Department, Secretaria de Relaciones Exteriores in Mexico. So we're trying to stick with that model, but nothing to say that we cannot amend it to something you feel comfortable with.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, all right, so at this point...
I just want to say welcome and thank you. I'm excited to have you as a sister city as well and coming to your events. Yo se que la gente de Zacatecas es muy alegre, so.
Claro que sí, gracias.
Yes, yes, señor Morales, familia, gracias por todo lo que hacen por los Zacatecanos in Baldwin Park. You have to go to their event at their house or the halls. They like literally bring a lot of people. So we're looking forward to signing with the, with the mayor, all of us together, meeting everyone. So thank you very much.
On the 27th, there's an event also. The Federation is having a big one. We'll give you the flyers.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Gracias. All right, at this point, the next, okay, the next item that we have, we have a request by Councilmember Monica Garcia, which is a clarification of her position related to the David Salcedo lawsuit in response to council comments during the regular meeting on August 2. So at this point, Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm going to take the first and second item together because they are interrelated. And that second item reads, "Review of Rules of Decorum pertaining to council members making sanders or false statements and attacking other council members' positions. This in response to comments made by Mayor Protan Susan Rubio and Councilmember Cruzbaca at the study session on August 7, 2017." And unfortunately, I've had to post this, these items as I've seen an escalating pattern by certain members on this council who continuously resort to attacking other council members' positions versus agreeing to disagree. I saw that this evening. More recently, I was a target of this behavior at the council meetings on August 2 and August 7 by Susan Rubio and Cruzbaca. I placed these interrelated items on the agenda because I believe these behaviors are escalating, and I am asking for protection through our rules of decorum and also by, you know, the presiding officer of this chamber. Regarding the first item, I feel it's important to clarify my position on the lawsuit involving former chief David Salcedo. On August 2, Susan Rubio attacked my position and stated I was irresponsible for abstaining from a vote regarding this issue. Let me be very clear that I carefully considered my position and have a very solid foundation for the decision that I made. First and foremost, I oppose the termination of former chief Salcedo, just like I opposed the termination of chief Lily Hadso in 2013, both of whom have brought active lawsuits against the city due to their termination. Let me state again for the record, I did not terminate these individuals, nor did my decision result in lawsuits that have been brought against the city. Secondly, I too can engage at that level. I too can begin attacking positions on this council. But to this point, I've refrained out of respect for colleagues, for the decision-making process that you utilize, for the audience and staff, and the time that we have together. Now regarding the second item, I do want to, I did request the rules of decorum, and I do want to read what one of our rules is. All persons must refrain from abusive behavior which disrupts the orderly conduct of the council meeting. The statement made by Cruzbaca was abusive, in my opinion, in that she deliberately misrepresented my position or my, my statement and attacked my position. A position, by the way, that focused on my own opinion, experience, time on the planning commission, and on the city council. At no time did I attack another council colleague's position, but instead, I provided reasoning and logic for why I was taking the position that I took. At no time in my public comments did I make a statement in reference to parking problems along Ramona Boulevard. The statement made by Cruzbaca was false and made up, or otherwise known as a lie. I should have some protection on this dais from these bullying and harassing tactics, and that's all I'm asking for. Now, did I interrupt Cruzbaca? I did. That was never my intent, and it's unfortunate I had to engage at that level. To demonstrate that it wasn't my intent, I listened to the council comments and confirmed that Susan Rubio spoke four times during that item. Cruzbaca spoke two to three times while I spoke once, and we all sat here and we listened respectfully. To demonstrate, again, you know, I, my intent is to be respectful, but I ask the same in return. This is why I'm asking that we review the rules of decorum and abide by them or that we modify the language to prevent this type of incident from happening in the future. If self-regulation does not work, then let's spell them out in the rules of decorum. And I want to point to an example, and it's interesting that the, you know, we have representatives from West Covina here because there's some language in the rules of decorum for the city of West Covina that states, "Council members shall accord the utmost courtesy to each other, to city employees, and to the public appearing before the council, and shall refrain at all times from rude and derogatory remarks, reflections as to integrity, abusive comments and statement as to motives and personalities." I think that would really speak to, you know, the incident that occurred more recently, to the behavior that I've seen and have experienced on this council. I think if we all focus on why we are each here, what our individual position is, I think we can prevent some of this back and forth. And the reality is that we could be here all night attacking each other's position, but how productive would that be? I don't think it is. And so that's why I've asked that we revisit this rules of decorum. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Cruzbaca?
Let me refresh Councilmember Garcia's memory.
Let me refresh a counsel member Garcia's memory. When I was having problems about a year and a half ago here on the dais and at special meetings and closed sessions, I brought to the table the rules of decorum, the Roberts rules, and I even presented at that time at a special meeting, I presented and used for an example the West Covina policy that they have on decorum. I was shot down. I was shot down by you, Mayor Lozano, that said that you didn't want anyone telling you what to say, or whatever. Those may not be the exact words verbatim.
Definitely not.
But you did say that you did not want to, that you felt that we had something in place and that that was not necessary. Counselor member Garcia, you went as far as to call me a liar and to tell me that I had other people to do my dirty work for me, and that you felt that I was a bully. My answer to you was that I was glad that you had told me that, because now we knew how we understood each other and we didn't have to pretend. That was a year and a half ago. Since then, I have tried and I pleaded with you, Mayor Lozano, to please protect me up here on the dais, because there was such brutality that was going on, such lies and so many things that were being said, slanderous things. What I did last week was not slanderous and it was not a lie. If counsel member Garcia felt that I was lying about something, she could have very well told me, "I don't agree," and I don't, and I did not say that, instead of attacking me like she did. I too have a copy of the transcript, that I don't want to go through the whole trouble of reading it today, because I don't want to be here all night. But I also want to read the enforcement of the decorum, and it says, "The presiding officer shall request that a person who is breaching the rules of decorum be orderly and silent. If after receiving a warning from the presiding officer, a person persists in disturbing the meeting, which counsel member Garcia was doing," as you kept hitting the gavel on the desk, Mayor. "The meeting, the presiding officer shall order him or her to leave the council meeting. If such person does not remove himself or herself, the presiding officer may order any law enforcement officer who is on duty at the meeting as sergeant-at-arms of the council to remove that person from the council chambers. In 3905 of our failure to observe rules of order, the failure to observe such rules strictly does not affect the jurisdiction of the council or invalidate any action taken at meeting that otherwise conforms to applicable law. Any member may move to require the presiding officer of the meeting to enforce the rules, and the affirmative vote of a majority of the members present will require him or her to do so." There have been many times, I mean, many times, without getting into specifics, I feel that I am protected through my First Amendment right. As mayor, as, as counsel member Garcia has actually told me and Vice Mayor Rubio, that Mr. Tuttle is our campaign manager, which is not true, but yet she has said it from up here, and I didn't fire slanderous or whatever allegations at her. I just think that there, this has gotten carried away, like I said, and I will repeat it. I have, a year and a half ago, I tried to bring the orals of, the rules of decorum, the Roberts rules, or something to keep ordering in this, in this council, and to keep from us shouting at each other and go way into 11 o'clock at night. And now all of a sudden, it's important to her because she claims that I slandered her? There was no slanderous remarks. And anybody that would like a copy of the minutes, I can give you a copy of the minutes and what took place with my conversation with her, considering the disrespect that I got up here and that I was not able to speak my right to speak at that time, and was brutally interrupted over and over. And the mayor, you tried, I've got to give it to you, you did try, you did try to control her, but you couldn't control her. It was beyond that. So I am, I am in agreement of enforcing an order of decorum. Thank you.
Just real quick, let me, just clarification as, as far as the term myself, having the authority and power. We're talking about removing someone from the audience, because unless it's new that I have the power to remove someone from up here, I don't think so. Legal counsel, you're going to have to check that one out. I mean, we're all elected independently. I've never seen that before, that the chairperson, the mayor, can remove someone from the dais. I don't think so. But again, let's look at that. Let's look at that, legal counsel, because that's new to me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mayor, well, I want to clarify, well, I mean, at some point, you have to have leadership up here, because last council meeting, you were banging the gavel over and over again, demanding that counsel member Garcia stop talking over counsel member Cruz Baca. And you kept banging that gavel and banging, I mean, at some point, if someone is not letting the other council member speak, at some point, you have to, you know, exert leadership and say, "How do we continue this meeting when the gavel's going on?" You keep saying, "Monica, please stop, stop," and she's not listening. At some point, you know, there has to be some kind of order, and that comes from you. Now, he's going to have to look into it, but what I witnessed last week also is something I've never seen before. She kept interrupting and yelling over her to the point that you were yelling louder, Mayor, just to try to control her, and she wouldn't stop talking. Now, going back to a year, I do remember the days when Cruz Baca kept asking for protection. She felt bullied. She wanted an investigation. She felt she was being attacked. And not only did, you know, she not get the protection she needed, because I remember, clearly, my words to the mayor were, if it were your mother or your sister or any member of our organization, any employee that was asking for protection, we would do it for them. But yet Cruz Baca begged and pleaded, and she was denied that protection. If anybody want to listen to that council meeting, not only did you say no, but verbatim, Monica Garcia laughed at her and said, "Stop playing the victim," and just literally laughed at her. That is unacceptable. That is when counsel member Baca insisted on rules, decorum. She brought it time and time again, and it was voted down by three people on the dais, including Monica Garcia, who's now asking for rules. Why wasn't it necessary when counsel member Cruz Baca was being attacked, slandered? And I remember her saying that Mr. Tuttle was our campaign manager, went on for months, and I remember I kept saying, "Mayor, unless she can provide proof that he's my campaign manager, she cannot be making up these allegations." And it went on and on. So now that last week, she felt she was offended, even though she was the one talking over Cruz Baca, now she wants decorum? We should have decorum. It should have been done a year ago when counsel member Cruz Baca brought it up. And so if you want to respect, then you need to respect other council member.
Let me, let me just real quick clarify what you said, Vice Mayor. As a school teacher, I, I'm taken aback that you're here fabricating information. I heard those tapes. I do not have the power to deny anyone from seeking assistance from law enforcement, which was done. So I'm sorry, you fabricated that information, and it's a shame, because you're seeking a higher office, and that's unacceptable. Let's bring the tapes, because right now, there's a lot of people that are here. Of course, you're going to be on video, you're going to play your little thing, and it's unfortunate. But I'll tell you one thing right now, I'm not going to waste my time on what you're telling me right now about whether it was my sister, mom, whatever, don't go there, because I know what you're trying to do, and it's not going to work with me. So at this point right now, counsel member Monica Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think that if we're all in agreement that we, we want to see, you know, some order here, I would, I would like to propose that we include in our rules of decorum, "Council members shall accord the utmost courtesy to each other, to city employees, and to the public appearing before the council, and shall refrain at all times from rude and derogatory remarks, reflections as to integrity, abusive comments and statements as to motives and personalities." And I'll make that motion to, to include that.
All right, is that, is that a motion?
Well, I want to clarify, you know, Mayor, just to be clear, going back to what I said about your sister and your mom, I'm just repeating what I said verbatim that year ago. I'm not saying it now. I said at the time, because I saw counsel member Cruz Baca pleading, I remember I said, you know, if it were an employee or a sister, I'm just merely repeating what's on record and what I said. I'm not saying it now. I'm just merely reminding you that after much debate, much debate, you did say, "You know what? Let's take it to the DA." And we did, or something like that. But at the time, she just wanted an internal investigation for us to figure it out, so it didn't continue. And at the end, you did agree. And I will say that you agreed, and you said, "Let's take it to the DA," and we did. However, it took a lot of back and forth. My question is, if we're going to have protections, it needs to be equal across the board. At that time, I think counsel member Cruz Baca brought that ordinance maybe twice or tried to present it twice, I don't remember exactly, but it went on. It should have been so simple as, "Yes, we need decorum, let's pass it." This is how we just moved forward, but here we are a year later because we didn't pass it. So I'm not accusing you, I'm just saying, I'm reminding you of what I said a year ago. Thank you, Mayor.
It's a shame, and you're a school teacher. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to move forward to the next. Make a motion, that is my, that is my motion to move forward to the next item. Is there a second?
Second.
Any objections?
Yes.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, roll call, please. And the mo, the motion is for us to move forward to the next item. I'd make that motion.
Mayor Lozano?
Yes.
Counselor Mayor Baca?
No, because I want to read the 3901, which is the decorum in order which pertains to council and staff, because there was a question about it, and I have it here in front of me.
Okay, that's fine. So at this point, you.
Counselor Member Garcia?
Yes, we'll move forward.
All right, so at this point.
Mayor Potem Rubio?
Counselor Member Cruz Baca has questions and needs answers. I think she should get those answers. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, so what is your motion?
Is your, no, there is.
What is your motion?
No, I didn't make a motion, I'm just saying, you know, that she wants a response in terms of what she just said.
All right, so at this point, the motion passes three, two. So we're going to move forward to the next item on the agenda, which is the request for a letter of support to ensure the San Gabriel Mountains National Monument open space remains unchanged. The designation came from years of public engagement and study to preserve nationally significant resources with the minimal boundaries possible and should remain for future generations. Counselor member Monica Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor, yes. So I'd like us to send a letter to the Trump administration, just making sure that we keep the open space known as the San Gabriel Mountains National Monument. And there was so much work that went into designating this, and so we want to preserve that. So I'd like to see us move forward with a, a letter of support from the mayor and council, and that's my motion.
All right, well, is there, I'll second. Any objections? See now to move. Next one, request by Mayor Potem Rubio for discussion and consideration, discussion regarding the Walburn Development Project.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this goes back to the, the rules of decorum, you know, last council meeting, we had a developer here. Not only was he brought up to sit on the di, appear on the dais with us, which is out of the norm, we don't do that, but if we go back to that meeting, this gentleman was so rude to counsel member Cruz Baca, was talking over her, and this is not a council member appear on the dais. Like, we allowed this person, who's a guest in our council chambers, to be yelling over counsel member Cruz Baca, and again, no one did anything. She was trying to talk, and he kept talking over her. That has never been allowed. Now, maybe us as council members, we are allowed to yell and do whatever we want, but that's even to allow a developer to treat a council member like that, I think that was disrespectful, and I demand that he apologize, write a letter of apology to Cruz Baca. He was yelling over her, talking over her, and then laughing, if you guys didn't see that. And I don't think we should ever bring any developer to sit up here with us. I think that was wrong, and I demand, and I hope everyone agrees, that he owes counsel member Cruz Baca an apology. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, I'm going to, yes.
Mayor, I, I do agree with Vice Mayor Rubio, and I did hear it from several people, that he was very condescending and rude when he sat up here. He felt, you know, he looked to me when I was trying to ask him certain questions, that he already had the vote for his project, and so he didn't care what I had to say. And I'm sure, I heard it from several people, it's just, it's not just me thinking that he was condescending, or that I was having a bad evening. I believe that Mr. Walburn, Matt Walburn, owes me an apology. I did try to contact his superior, Alex Hernandez, and I got no answer back, so that I could speak to Mr. Hernandez about the way, and he was sitting here in the audience, and he saw how Mr. Walburn was conducting himself up here. I think it was very disrespectful. I don't think that any of you would have allowed that if he would have been speaking to you that way. Sometimes I start to think that maybe it's because I'm a woman, that they don't care. So I need to take that into consideration. I want Mr. Walburn to apologize.
Mayor.
All right, thank you. Yes, one more, counsel member Monica Garcia.
Thank you. What I observed was there was hostility coming from this, this dais to the, the person who's trying to present the project. So that was my observation, and that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
We were here, we're put here to ask questions, and when counsel member Cruz Baca was asking questions of this developer who is practically, in my opinion, this is my personal opinion, giving city land, he refused to answer her questions. Like, how do we get a, you know, let a developer get away with that? She kept asking him questions, and he kept saying, "Ask your staff, ask your staff," and he refused to answer. That is unacceptable. If someone's here, given a project, and someone up here on the dais asks a question, I think he's obligated to answer the question, especially when we're talking about a project, originally it was a park plaza across the street, where the city spent half a million dollars for this beautiful park plaza for the community, and after two years of staff time, staff money, a lot of thought and resources went into it, half a million dollars later, this gentleman decides he wants that land, and we give him the land. At the very least, he should have answered counsel member Cruz Baca's questions on that regard. He refused, he didn't want to say what he paid for the land, and he kept just saying, "Ask your staff, ask your staff." He doesn't get to say that. We get to ask our staff. He is a developer, he needs to answer our questions, and the fact that we let him get away with that, not only does he get the land that was slated for a project, not only do we lose half a million dollars that we invested on this beautiful project for our community, but now he went from 72 apartments to 46 apartments to now 14 apartments. How is that a benefit to the community? And again, if he wants it, he should have been respectful and answered counsel member Cruz Baca's question, and he refused, and he got away with it. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, if I just may say quickly that.
Yes, all right.
There, there was no land that was given away at the last council meeting.
As a matter of fact, there's a request that the developer paid for that land, and, and what was in question at the time was how the, the appraisal was done, of which, well, I don't want to defend anybody, but I, I think that the best thing to do is, just wanted to clarify, there was nothing, actually, action taken at the last council meeting that would give land to anybody. But the land is being paid for, if you read the DDA. Also, I, I would suggest maybe that counsel member Baca and city manager and developer sit down together and kind of discuss this issue about, you know, respect and how to communicate to one another. Maybe there just needs to be better communication between yourselves. So anyways, that's just what I wanted to suggest. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
But one more thing, let me just add this.
Hold on, counsel member Cruz Baca, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, I just want to say, there is no gift of land, but how do we know that? People refuse to tell us how much he paid for the land, number one. How do we not know, as council members, how much he paid for the land? That is city property, that is taxpayer money. He refused to tell us how much he paid for the land. And when counsel member Cruz Baca, and that's the hostility that counsel member Monica Garcia is talking about, when she insisted to know how much he paid for the land, he said, "Well, my project is smaller now, so we're going to have to recalculate the price of this property." How does property go down? Property is property, no matter if you have 72 apartments, and all of a sudden, he couldn't build it, so now he went from 72 to 14 houses, because now he's putting less homes on that property, he wants to recalculate that land. So the fact that he refused to tell us how much he paid for the land, the fact that we still don't know how much he's paying for the land, and he's been working on it for six months, and his response was, "Ask your staff," and no one can give us answers as to how much he paid for the land. So as far as I'm concerned, because I don't know the appraisal, right now, it's a gift of public land. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor woman, hold on, I just want to clarify.
Hold on, allow Cruz Baca to go first. All right, thank you.
Mayor, as far as be, there was hostility, I'm going to say, if that's what you want to call it, call it hostility. I am very, very aggressive when it comes to spending our taxpayers' money. He did not give me an answer as to what the appraisals had been for those properties. There had been question that the Urban X property was valued at a, at a million six or a million seven.
Eight hundred first.
It was eight hundred thousand first, but it went up to a million six. I wanted to know what the appraisal was, because we had been waiting for that appraisal. It wasn't that I was doubting what the appraisal said, I wanted answers from him to tell me, what was the appraisal? What are you purchasing the land for? I didn't want him to tell me that he was breaking it up and that the school property wasn't going to be a part of it, or the parking lot behind the, the Ramona buildings or businesses. I wanted him to give me an answer. He was very condescending, at the point where he felt he didn't have to give me an answer, that he already had a done deal, and that he was not going to tell me, regardless of how I worded it, he was not going to give me the information. how I worded it, he was not going to give me the information. And if you call it hostility, counsel member Garcia, I call it that I just wanted answers for my, for my taxpayers and for my residents and for my businesses. What is this person purchasing a piece of property, this prime property, in the city of Baldwin Park for? That's what I wanted, and I got no answers from him.
Mayor?
Yes, counsel member Ricardo Pacheco.
I just, for the, I want to communicate that we're going through the DDA process, so that information wasn't available, although he did say that the city paid for the appraisal, you can get that from the city manager, so that's available. But there is a difference in the properties that you're referring to and the one that the developer's working on, because they're in different locations, and they're different sizes and shapes, so there's a lot more that goes into the appraisal to be able to come up with how much that is. And I don't, maybe we should have another study session on how the appraisal, or just in general, on the project, but I don't, if the city manager could get the appraisals to the council, so we could take a look at them at that point.
All right, this point...
Mayor?
Yes, counsel member...
Sorry.
Yes, fine.
I did get a copy of the appraisals. Yes, I did. And it's a million, six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. From what I understand, the Brandywine people or Walburn had said that he wasn't going to spend more than eight hundred thousand for that property. According to the appraisal that was done, that was given to me, was a million six for that particular parcel. The other parcel, which is, we refer to it as the red brick building... The appraisal is nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And the appraisal was done, oh gee, by Lidgard and Associates. Both of them were done by...
All right, so at this point, if we want to discuss it, we'll set up a separate meeting. I'm going to go ahead and call for a German at the city council meeting, that's my motion.
Second.
Any objections? See now, so move. Who called the second? All right, I have three more, and we'll be out of here in about five minutes. Right, at this point, I'd like to open up the Finance Committee Authority. At this point, I want to move for a consent calendar, that's my motion.
Second.
Second, any objections? See now, so move.